All right, I'd like to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting of April fifteenth. It is seven oh two P M. First agenda item is I'd like to read into the record in accordance with the governance order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Due to the twenty twenty coronavirus outbreak, the April fifteenth meeting of the zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, in to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook dot com. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting, meeting is being recorded and will be available to be viewed at a later date at Lake Cam TV. Okay, you have any devices that ring or beep or whatnot if you could mute them if you are not muted to interrupt the meeting. And the first agenda item is the continuance of the Boston Botanical hearing. I believe Amy has prepared the findings and Amy, you want to just, you want to comment on that? Or do we just need to vote to approve?
Sure, so, so the only thing is that I have the parking wrong, apparently. Um, and it's my understanding that the applicant did send an email changing the parking to twenty six. So the parking, the number of parking spots. So, so that's really the only, the only change other than that. The findings are what they are unless, unless the board has other findings that they would like to incorporate into this. So I can go through.
How many spaces was it?
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, why don't I do the same? Does anybody else, any other board members have any comments other than the revision to the parking spaces that Amy just pointed out?
No, how many, how many spaces were there?
So I'm looking that up, Chris, sorry about that.
Sorry.
So it's thirty four to twenty six. Which, you know, again, for a cultivation facility, they're really only looking for parking spaces for employees. This isn't a, this isn't a retail situation where they're going to need, you know, more than that. And then the only, the only other thing that I, I needed, Mr. Chairman, from the applicant was that the, the planning board had indicated that they wanted to see an area fenced in. But I didn't know what area they were, there was no indication as to what area they were talking about. I didn't know if the applicant was aware of that when they did site plan review as to what area the planning board was looking to have fenced in.
Ed, go ahead.
I can speak to that if that's helpful. It's was the loading area, which is marked on the new site plan, as in the loading dock area.
Is it fenced in on the new site plan?
It is, yep.
And where else, okay.
Thank you. Wanted that also.
Yep.
Okay, well, no one else has any other comments in regards to the findings. I guess at this point, Amy, we just need a, a motion to accept, correct? In a second and.
Correct, yeah.
So I'll entertain.
If you wanted to take a motion to accept the findings, you could do that by majority vote. And then you could do a motion to approve the special permit and that would be by a super majority.
Okay, so first I'll entertain a motion to accept the findings as presented by counsel with the revision on the parking spots to twenty six as she explained. First, so someone would like to make a motion to that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so Jeff made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second, Chairman.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second, any further discussion? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote and Kathy, keep me honest here. I want to say that we, we have our, all of our regular members have participated in the hearings to this point. Or, or if one of the members realizes you haven't, please let me know, so this is accurate.
That's accurate.
Okay, so, um, just in the order that I'm seeing you on my screen in front of me, we have to do a roll call vote. All of those in favor, yay, against, nay. Nora?
Yay, yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Jeff Youngquist?
Yes.
Jerry Noble?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well, I think I hit all of us, correct? So it's unanimously, the findings unanimously approved. Now, the next order of business, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, is we just need a vote on approving the special permit.
Exactly, and that would be a super majority.
As applied for with the findings that we just voted to accept, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Jeff's made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second, it's Nora.
Nora has second in the motion, again, roll call vote, needs to be a super majority, yay if you're in favor, nay if you're against. Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yay.
Jerry Noble?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well, motion passes unanimously. That closes the hearing and finishes up our work on this one. Anything we need to advise the petitioner of Amy or Kathy?
No, so the, the vote, the vote that you just took did include, it included the conditions that were drafted. So, and, and the, the applicant is aware of those conditions, so, so that's it. That's it, so, so you guys voted, so we will get a decision to the town clerk within fourteen days.
Great. Okay, any questions, Ed?
No, thank you all so much, really appreciate it.
You're welcome, good luck. Okay, our next item, I don't go too quickly on my computer here. It, the Petro hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna accuse myself.
Noted, so I'm going to ask, let's see. Mr. Campo, I'm gonna have you act on this one. Okay, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General laws as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April fifteenth, to hear the petition of Dennis and Wendy Petro, a special permit under six point three point two and seven point four point six is requested to place a thirty by forty garage on a pre-existing non-conforming lot within the setback as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is seven Denise Street. Pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency orders, all of the suspension provisions are still in place. So, um, who is presenting for this petitioner? Who will be speaking?
I am.
Okay, Dennis, um, why don't you tell us what you're, you're doing and then we'll move forward from there?
Okay, so we're proposing building a thirty by forty garage. Our house right now is twenty-three feet from the edge of the road, thirty-seven feet to the side of the road. We're on a private road, it's not a town maintained road. The setback game will be for the garage will be thirty-one feet, which is further away from the road than the house is as it stands. Will have twenty-seven feet to our neighbor to the west and will have fifty-four feet to our back lot line north. So the only setback issue we have is from the road. And again, the, the house is going to be, excuse, eight feet closer to the road than the garage will be.
Okay, thank you. Let me read in a couple of comments from other boards and then I'll take questions or comments from the, our board members. So the Board of Health and a memo dated April twelfth noted, the Board of Health has no objections to the garage as long as it is greater than ten feet away from the septic field and is on a slab. The planning board commented on a letter dated April thirteenth. At the Thursday, April eighth meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board has no comments regarding this petition. In addition, the Conservation Commission has reviewed all of the petitions that are before us this evening and did send over an email noting that they had no concerns on any of them, which would include this one, so. At this point, let me, I'll open it up to board members to see if anybody has any questions or concerns regarding the petition.
Mr. Chairman, it's Nora.
Go ahead, Nora.
I just have one question that could become two, depends. I show on the plan that there's an existing garage, what's going to happen with that garage?
Mr. Petro?
So right now that garage is more of a storage area, so it's actually gonna be used by my wife for parking.
Do we know the total area of coverage on the lot at this point, if it meets the impervious? Yeah, it will remain less than twenty-five percent, so that shouldn't be an issue. Did you have another question, Nora?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, along those, if you don't want, I'm sorry, along those lines on the previous coverage, the applications notes driveways plus or minus five hundred square feet. Is that for what the driver will be with the new garage or what, that's what's existing today?
That's already existing.
So how much new driveway would you add with this new garage?
Not, it actually be removing about a hundred and twenty square feet of driveway.
You're removing a hundred and twenty square feet?
Yes, maintain my setbacks from the septic and as such.
Okay.
You good, Jerry, or did you need more clarification?
Yeah, I'm just not sure what the actual square footage of the new driver will be post-construction.
Well, let me, let me addition to this, in the plans that I'm looking for, the sketch maybe that I'm looking for, it references driveway plus or minus five hundred square feet. Is that plus or minus five hundred square feet of what will, will be happening, what you're proposing? Because the, the line after that references that everything above will still be less than twenty-five percent.
Correct, we're not adding any driveway.
Okay.
Well, that's, well, go ahead, Jerry, if you have.
No, I'm just, just doing the previous coverage, twenty-five percent of that forty, sixty thousand five hundred square foot lots, about forty-one hundred square feet roughly by my math. So I'm just trying to make sure we're under the twenty-five percent coverage. Makes sense?
Well, yeah, it does, but I mean, this is all on record, so the, the petitioner is gonna have to make sure that they, they keep within the twenty-five percent. They can't add another line item yet, or if they do, you know, the building commissioner or somebody will pick up on it. Anyone else have any question, concerns? Is anyone interested in making a motion to approve the special permit with any conditions or as applied for?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Youngquist? Approve it as applied for?
Prove it as applied for.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have first and a second, Jeff and Nora, roll, any further discussion? Roll call vote, yay or nay, Nora?
Yay.
Chris Campo?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael has refused himself, Jeff?
Yay.
And Jerry?
Yay.
I'm in favor as well, motion passes unanimously. Kathy, you're up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The Z B A has two weeks to get the paperwork done to the, and given to the clerk. Oh, he's gone, oh no, sorry, he switched over there. There's a twenty day appeal period, if there are no appeals, the clerk will sign it and the decision will be sent to you. You take it to the registry of deeds to record it and then take the receipt from there to the building department when you go for your permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Tate Charles, all right. Our next agenda item is the Dustin Moore hearing, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April fifteenth at seven P M. They have the petition of Dustin Moore, a special permit under six point one point three and seven point four point six is requested to raise and rebuild a single family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is six Sandy Point Road. All of the provisions regarding the remote meeting are still in place. Who will be presenting for the petitioner?
Dustin Moore.
Okay, Dustin, go ahead and tell us what you're doing.
I will just add, I want to razz the house that's there and then I rebuild. And the only thing I was gonna change from the existing structure, I want to add four feet facing the house on the left-hand side. And even doing that, I'll still maintain at the closest point like twenty-five feet from the property line.
All right, so you'll still be within the setback requirements. Um, all right, let me read a couple of items into the record, Board of Health comments from the memo dated April twelfth. Six Sandy Point Road, the property currently has a heat restriction on the house stating dwelling will remain a two-bedroom dwelling with no increased flow, inflow to the septic system and no further expansion. Thus, if the proposed house is any larger than the existing house, it would not allow. Also, a Title V inspection must be done if applicant wishes to reuse the existing septic system, which obviously that portion is on the Board of Health. And it sounds like other than the four feet, you're not really making it any larger or, or plan to increase the flow, correct?
Yep.
Memo dated April thirteenth from the planning board. At their Thursday, April eighth meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments regarding this petition and again, Conservation commented on all of the petitions that they have no concerns. Looks like a pretty simple request here, do any, does anyone on the board have any questions or concerns? Chris Carmichael?
On the plot plan I'm looking at, i- is there a side setback to that lot line?
Side setback to, to the left or the right side of you?
As I'm looking at it, um, to the right side of the house from Sandy Neck.
Yep. Uh, the distance from the property line, from the building is at, at that backside, that's the closest area. It's about seven and a half feet from the property line.
And are there any other structures on, on the other side of the property within that, in that area?
There, no, no.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, anyone else? Well, like I said, this one seems pretty straightforward, so having said that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit with or without conditions, depending on who makes the motion, anyone, anyone up for making a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve it as submitted.
Sounds good, Nora, do we have a second?
Noble second.
Excellent, very seconded, any further discussion? Yay or nay, if you're in favor, roll call vote, Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Jeff Youngquist?
Yay.
And Jerry Noble?
Yay.
And I'm in favor as well, motion passes unanimously. There you go, Kathy, we're gonna make a little recording for you in the future, Kathy, so you don't have to repeat yourself. You're on mute though, so now would be a good time for me to have that recording.
All right, the Z B A, the Z B A will try to get the paperwork to the town clerk within fourteen days. There's a twenty day appeal period, if there's no appeals, she'll sign it and get it in the mail. And then you take that paperwork to the registry of deeds to have it recorded and bring the receipt to the building department when you go for your permit.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
All right, good luck, Mr. Moore. Our next hearing is the, uh, well, I don't want to butcher this, but let's go, Gula, Gular petition. So you'll correct me when I finish reading it into the record here, opening it. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, April fifteenth, seven P M, to hear the petition of Christine. Christine, help me out here, because I don't want to pronounce it wrong.
It's Leach Gulat.
Leach, Christine Leach Gulat, a special permit under six point one point three and seven point four point six is requested to connect an existing single family home to an existing garage on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. As provided by the Lakeville bylaws, the property is eleven Charbonneau Avenue. And again, all of the remote protocols are still in place. Okay, Christine, are you presenting for yourself?
Yes, I am.
All right, why don't you tell us what you're doing and then I'll read a few things into the record and see where we end up.
Okay, we, we remodeled the house back in ninety-seven. And at that time when we did so, um, the floor plan we have has only one bedroom in it right now. Our, our lot is deeded for two bedrooms. And what we propose to do now, since it makes it difficult when families there and we only have the one bedroom, is to connect the garage and the house together and have a, an extra bedroom upstairs, so we'll have the two bedrooms.
Very good. Bear with me for a second because there's one other email regards to this that I received a little later today. I'm not sure, I'm assuming maybe the rest of the board did, but I want to make sure I have it available.
Okay.
If not, Kathy will have it available, but, um. Yeah, okay, everybody should have it available too, so, all right, let me read some stuff into the record here. So we have Board of Health comments from a email dated April twelfth, eleven Charbonneau Avenue. A Title V inspection must be done prior to any building permit being issued. Also, the room above the garage cannot be converted into a bedroom nor can it be heated. Now, in relation to that, this is the email I was looking for. And to clarify that, that, that was not accurate. On a Thursday, April fifteenth memo from Ed Cullen, the Board of Health agent, the room above the garage can be used, that's can be used as a bedroom, providing one of the existing two bedrooms in the home is removed, as long as the home remains a two-bedroom home, the Title V inspection will not be required. So is your intention to leave it a two-bedroom home, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, let's see, also, the planning board memo dated April thirteenth at their April eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments regarding this petition and again, for the record, Concom did comment on all of the petitions and they do not have any, see any concerns either. So, looks like you just want to connect the two of them and you're not gonna increase the flow to a septic system and it's not gonna infringe on any setbacks and the, it's, uh, I don't see anything too complicated here, but I'll reference, I'll, I'll defer to my board to see if they have any questions or concerns or clarifications or anything I may have missed.
Okay.
Anyone?
Pretty straightforward.
Does that mean you want to make a motion, Mr. Carmichael?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal as submitted.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Chris made the motion, Jeff seconded it, let's do a roll call, yay or nay vote, unless there's any further discussion, which I'm guessing there isn't. Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yay.
Jerry?
Yay.
I am in favor as well, motion passes unanimously. And Kathy, I think this is the last time for this evening.
Okay, uh, the Z B A has fourteen days to get the paperwork done and submit it to the town clerk. Then there's a twenty day appeal period, there are no appeals, she'll sign it and the decision will be sent to you. Then you take that to the registry of deeds and have it recorded and bring the receipt to the building department when you go for your permit.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, I believe our final agenda item today is in regards to Twisted Growers LLC. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, April fifteenth, seven P M, to hear the petition of Twisted Growers LLC. They request to modify their special permit under seven point four point six A that was granted on January sixteenth of this, of last year, actually twenty twenty, and filed with the town clerk on February seventh, twenty twenty, to incorporate adult use marijuana operations on the premise of four fifteen Millennium Circle as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. Property owner is D F C of Lakeville four fifteen LLC. Again, all the remote protocols are still in place. So, and I'm gonna ask Amy to keep me on track here. I, at this point, what we're doing is we're, we're gonna discuss whether the changes are significant, I guess, and if we need to reopen the hearing or anything along those lines, might, on the right base, Amy? You're muted.
So, um, so, Mr. Chairman, I didn't get any paperwork on this, did they file an application or are they here administratively?
I believe it's administratively, correct, Kathy?
You are correct.
They, they did file an application, I thought I sent you the packet with the invite, you didn't got that?
I don't have Twisted Growers, I only have Boston Botanicals. But in, in any event, there's no question that this is a significant change, because the only way, with a special permit, the only way to change a special permit is, is if there was an inadvertent error. So it would be something, you know, where you meant to allow, you know, sixty-eight parking, or you meant to allow eighty-six parking spaces, but you allowed sixty-eight. And so here, they're actually changing the special permit to allow for retail or for adult use, I should say. They're cha, they're actually changing the purpose of their special permit, so it would be a, it would be a change that would have to modify the special permit. But it would actually, so, under the, um, under the zoning act, under forty-eight, section nine, there is no way, or section eleven, there is no way to modify a special permit, so, um, you know, the only way that that can be done is to issue a new special permit with the modified changes. So it would have to come back to this board, there is case law, again, there is case law that allows for inadvertent omissions. Um, and we did have, we did do that, I would say about three years ago on a special permit. But that's the only time I've done one here.
Okay.
And this is Meg Nash on behalf of the petitioner, Twisted Growers, if I may, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
Nope, go right ahead, Meg.
Sure, thank you, and I'm here with my client, Dominic Di Martino as well. We did submit an updated application, we did respond and provide additional information with respect to, you know, what this would entail. And essentially, it's a very minimal modification, it wouldn't update, wouldn't change the exterior site layout. The site plan has already been looked at by the planning board, we've submitted it to the fire chief. It really would just update the interior floor plan, which was submitted. fire chief. It really would just update the interior floor plan, which was submitted um and allow for adult use manufacturing in addition to cultivation, but the adult use cultivation is already been allowed. Um, there's nothing in the special permit findings as it currently exists that would prohibit uh manufacturing at this time. Um, so we're really the sort of specific relief requested would be to, just as uh attorney Questle uh indicated, modify the existing special permit to allow for this uh additional use. But again, it's really a a minimal change that will have zero impact on um the findings and conditions that have already been approved by the board. Um, and I, I'll, I'll ask my client Dominic too, if he wants to add any additional information um with respect to the prior hearing and and procedure.
Meg, Meg, I'm gonna interrupt you just one second. So just for a point of clarification, so I I make sure I'm understanding this correctly. It's still going to be a manufacturing or cultivation. There's gonna be no on-premise sales or anything along those lines. I think that's what you're telling us, correct?
Correct. No retail. It's just would be, the current special permit is just for cultivation and we'd like to amend it so it includes cult, it will stay cultivation but add product manufacturing to allow, you know, to sell um edibles, not just flour um to, you know, to B two B sales. No direct to consumer sales on site.
Okay, uh Dominic, if you want to add anything, feel free.
Yeah, good evening, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you? And thank you for taking the time to uh to hear us tonight. So basically, when, when I started with this, I had another law firm that I was working with and they were unexperienced a- along with myself and what we had applied for. I thought that when we, we got the, the ability to cultivate, that the cultivation and the manufacturing all went hand in hand. It wasn't until the new firm that we're, we're working with now had indicated, hey Dom, you have the ability to grow, but you don't have the ability, ability to uh to manufacture. So we're coming back tonight trying to pick up that piece. But in our existing plans, we have the room uh laid out within the plan and it was always you, it was always my, your desire to do so. It just, we didn't dot the i's and cross the t's and I guess that's the, the best way to say it.
I think that goes to a little bit of sort of the, the inadvertence with respect to the prior special permit that may allow for this modification um as attorney Questle indicated.
Amy, do you feel comfortable on commenting on that at this point? Um, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I guess I'm gonna
No, 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 I did get, I, I'm sorry, I did get what Kathy sent. I didn't get, I thought there was a new application that was filed. Um, but now I understand they're just here for this modification. So, so essentially a special, you, you granted a special permit for a use. Um, and the use was cultivation and they are now adding to that use. Um, they're adding product manufacturing to that use. And so um I, 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 I don't see how that's an inadvertent error. I really don't. Um, they never even applied for, uh, what, what I don't have is what they applied for. That, that was what I was trying to say in the beginning. Um, so it, I mean, I, I just don't know how you could say that was an inadvertent error. Um, there is no other way, there is no mechanism to modify a special permit um without um, without doing um the notification through um forty A section eleven. So the butters within three hundred feet are aware of the fact that they will now be doing product manufacturing also.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, question through you.
Wait, hang on a second, I have a comment and then I'll, I'll ask some other comments. I'm, I'm I'm sympathetic to the petitioner, but I um, I, I will have to personally defer it to, to counsel. Um, I, I think it was probably innocently a mistake, but to the petition is own um point, it was because someone else, not the current attorney, uh, but someone else, you know, left a pretty big block unchecked. Um, and I do understand that obviously cultivation versus manufacturing, they're both happening inside. Probably isn't a, a dress, as drastic a difference as selling it in retail, having people come in and out, but, but it does drastically change the permit. You know, maybe to, from the, someone from the outside looking in, what you're actually doing isn't changing significantly, but it does drastically change the permit. Um, so, or maybe not drastically, but enough so that we, we uh, again, to, to coun, our counsel's point, I think we need to, to go through the process of, of applying again. So um but that's my opinion. Um, I'm one of, of five, so I will ask my other board members if they have questions or concerns. Kathy?
Um, this has been advertised and butters were notified as if it was a brand new petition.
Does that impact this? That, that's my concern, honestly. I, I don't have a concern about talking about it this evening. My concern is I want to make sure we don't put ourselves in a, in a spot.
Yes, so that was my original question, whether this was administrative or whether this was a um, a public hearing. So if this is a public hearing, then you're all set.
Can we modify it?
Uh, so the public hearing is to modify the special permit.
Okay, so now that we've stumbled through that and I think I, well, that's all right. I'm the chairman, I get the blame.
No, not at all. You can always blame the lawyers.
Uh, you guys get enough blame, right Jeff? Jeff's having a good time laughing at us. So in any event, um, Chris Carmichael.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, question for counsel. Amy, do they have to go back and um change the host agreement?
I think they already did.
They did?
Um, so, so actually, um, Mr. Di Martino can um correct me. We just signed a host agreement with you. Was that?
That is correct. And that was the modified one where we had the ba, the base that you requested as well.
Yeah.
We've, we've done everything we could do to work with you and, and meet any of the, the, the other demands that were made. We, we did it all.
Okay, well, I, I really don't think there were many demands, but anyway, Mr. Carmichael, um, they do have a um, an updated um host community agreement.
Thanks counsel. Um, do we have any back statements from police, fire?
I mean, they know, they know about the, the uh hearing tonight, right Kathy? I'm guessing if they had any concerns, they would have um, have said anything. Go ahead counsel. Meg?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to follow up to let you all know that we did uh email Chief O'Brien, everything that has been submitted to the planning board on March thirty first and didn't receive a response. Um, but addition to, I imagine, sort of uh intercommunications, we did um send that over his way as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes Nora?
Well, that's my question too and understand I'm not an expert in this whatsoever, but I, as I look through uh, on the first page of the letter dated March twenty-fifth to you, uh, they talk about the extra uh, and anticipating incorporating following additional equipment. Um, and I'm looking particularly at the high pressure chromatography and gas uh analyzers and, and just want to make sure that the due diligence has been done by uh fire on uh that methodology as well. Because that would have been
Go ahead counsel.
That wouldn't have been in the first agreement explaining to us how that was all operating.
I can speak to that, uh, just to advise it. I believe that information was also sent to the fire chief and I also wanted to clarify that the current list, it was sort of over-inclusive, um, as Twisted Growers is in the process of recruiting and, and finding uh the individual who be the director of their product manufacturing, um, who kind of has the skillset, who will be able to bring this to fruition. And a lot of the, you know, decision-making around the specific equipment and how this will be, um, this specific equipment that will be involved will be made by that individual. Um, so we're certainly willing to continue to cooperate um with the fire police, fire police, you know, um, run anything by them um with, as plans um and product manufacturing uh develop to ensure that we're compliant with all local regulations, building codes, et cetera. Um, but that is, at this point, I just sort of wanted to frame it for the board with respect to the, the timing and sequencing of things.
So then, Mr. Chairman, we, we could in fact, if we wanted to, to continue with this tonight, we could in fact approve it with conditions upon uh fire looking at um the, the additional equipment.
Amy, if we were to, assume we were to um grant the modification or approve the modification, could we condition on confirmation that the fire chief has these, I'm pretty sure has, but has seen these in his time with?
So, so the only issue I have is that um there is case law that says that the zoning board of appeals is not allowed to delegate its authority. And so um provided that what you're asking the fire chief to do is not a make or break your decision, then it's fine. But if the fire chief comes back and says that the equipment is not satisfactory, um
Then we wouldn't get a C O. So it, it's a moot point.
Well, not really, because the um, the zoning board of appeals has the, has the charge that they have to make sure that the um facility is safe. And not
Amy, I just, I know Dominic wants to talk. I, I, the problem Dominic is he, the fire chief and, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I may be stepping a little beyond my, what I, my knowledge level is, but the fire chief um could turn around and not give you a C O for life safety reasons or within his authority. But if it's outside of his authority and the zoning board issued it, you could tell the fire chief, it doesn't matter that you said no, because they've already granted me the, the permit. I mean, and I'm saying it in layman's terms, but that's, that's the concern I think Amy's expressing, correct?
Exactly, exactly.
But uh, but if I may, at the end, at the end of the day, as long as we have a safe environment, you know, then it would be approved. And if we were looking to get a C O on a, on a facility like this, we would do everything that the fire marshal asked us to do to comply. So it's just about complying. It's not really, the, whatever apparatuses we're going to use or not use, there's, there's gonna be you know, a code we need to follow to be able to operate it. And if we follow that code, we get our C O. If we don't follow that code, we don't get a C O. And we're, we'd be holding up a, you know, a facility that's, you know, millions and millions of dollars tied up in that facility. Trust me, I'd be bending over backwards. They get that fire marshal to, you know, to allow me to open.
So I guess the problem is, um, Mr. Chairman, is how do you determine if this is not more detrimental to the neighborhood if you don't have, you know, safety conclusions?
Yeah, I, that's the issue, um, Mr. Di Martino. It's, it's not so much whether you comply with what the fire chief wants you to do, obviously. I, I have all the faith in the world that you would, but um, there's, there's aspects of this in which our our authority in granting this permit kind of trumps what the fire chief is able to do or not do. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying you would, you, you would challenge that, but um, you know, we can't look at one individual or one entity. We need to kind of follow a protocol here. And, and if somebody did decide to, it would, it would kind of tie the town's hands because we've already approved it. I mean, we could say, listen, we want a special condition in here that has nothing to do with life safety, but that would, that would, that would, you know, that life safety, that non-life safety issue would be a reason that you, you couldn't proceed forward. The fire chief would have no authority over that. This, I think that's the issue here.
Is there something that you guys have approved or, or denied at another operation that you're concerned with? It's, it's making this question, you come about this way?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Uh, I'm gonna respond to that and then you can speak, Chris. Um, it's really not a question that I, I feel is appropriate or, or in your best interest to, to to, to, to ask us. I mean, you're, you're basic, well, I'll, I'll, it's, it's a question we don't I'm gonna bite my tongue and let Mr. Carmichael ask his, uh, ask his question. Go ahead, Chris.
So the interior remodeling, I'm, I'm, I'm quite confident the building commissioner and, and the fire department will be able to address. It's the exterior um and the site plan and whether or not it's detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, the expanded operations, pardon me, I'm dealing with some fish palsy due to a tick bite, so bear with me. Um, are we adding more employees? Are we uh adding more parking? Are we changing the site plan? Um, those are the concerns that I have. And then um, would we need to continue this until we get in, impact statements and then find out all that out? So I'm in favor of continuing this until we get impact statements from police, fire. We know about the exterior, how many parking, uh, what the expanded operations are. I think we need a little bit more information.
And ag- again, with, with everything you've just, in, in my, when I approached this, this facility was already we already had this use happening within sides, within the facility. So the, the, the small room that this is going to be in, I think is about a uh, a a fifteen by twenty room. So it's about three hundred square feet overall. Uh, we're talking about uh one to two employees, but that was already accounted for in our original plan with Twisted Grower. So to me, nothing's changed, but I do understand your comments and concerns. But to me, the outside of the building staying the same, everything's staying the same, the way the Twisted Grower is presented and, and I don't think I would change anything other than having my attorneys you know, put this application in, in a different way, but everything's staying the same.
No new air handlers, no new um screening outside, nothing, nothing changing.
No, no, hundred percent no. I mean, again, you're talking about a very small room that's already in the original uh footprint of the building. It's a small room that's less than three hundred square feet and really is just something where they take flour or mass and then they, you know, manipulate it into an oil or into, to something other than than a smokable flower, so to say. Uh, that's, that's what's happening.
How many parking spaces do you currently have? And then how many do you anticipate that this will need?
Well, again, nothing's changed. I, I mean, this, this room is already there. In, if you, if, I don't have a, a plan that I could share with you, but the plan that was approved already has this room in the plan and these, this, this single employee or two employees was already accounted for. Nothing's changing with, with you, with the plan.
Understood.
The only modification is the additional um category of what they'll be, what they'll be, with, with the, with the marijuana will be used for, I guess, it's probably simplest to put it. So no change in employee count, no change in parking space. Um, uh, you know, I, I guess my question is, and this is maybe the concern to some folks, is there is, there is additional equipment being put in there. So for, for, for this new aspect of what the business is going to be doing, um, I'm just, I, I personally don't know enough about that equipment to, to say if it's gonna change anything or not. And I'm, I'm sure you do, but I think that's the concern some folks have is to make sure, we clarified that that equipment is not gonna change the makeup of the operation.
Understood. I, I, I mean, if we need more time, we need to come to another meeting to make it more clear or to, I, I have no issue with that. I mean, I, I don't want to push to, to have one outcome or the other. It, it, whatever you feel is best though, it is what it is.
Well, you want, listen, if I'm you, I want one outcome. I want the approval of the modification. So I thi, I think maybe, and, and you know, I'm, I'm, again, I'm not trying to steer the board here, but yeah, I know that there are some concerns, or at least I've heard one, um, two, I should say. Is there anything else anyone's concerned about other than potentially the, the equipment on the inside?
Hey John?
Yes.
Yeah, at the uh it's amazed me that they got this far, got through the whole process and didn't have manufacturing in there because that's the only way you do it. Of this, three or four I've already done. The manufacturers are always included in the grow facility. It just amazed me it didn't get in, put in that. But the, the whole thing, to make it clean? Should go through, continue the hearing and go on and get all the answers. And then thirty days later, they'll have the permit, we'll have everything done and it'll be clean.
Yeah, I, I, my guess is the only thing that we really need the answers is probably the fire chief to confirm um the equipment is, 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 isn't, isn't any more impactful than, than what's in there right now. Amy?
So, um, Mr. Chairman, are there any additional employees because of the product manufacturing?
I think we referenced that and I, I think you already, I think the petitioner said that wait, the two employees, but they were accounted for anyway.
They were already accounted for. And then um, the only other thing is that do they have, um, do they have their product manufacturing license from the C C C?
I can't answer that, but I'm sure Meg can.
The state application, I believe, is in process. Is that true, Dominic?
Oddly enough, we, it's, I, I'm under the impression our, the state has us for both cultivation, manufacturing, processing. And we're coming back to the, to the, to Lake, to Lakeville because we're missing it there.
Wait, had, what do you say? I, I'm, I'm a little concerned when you say you're under the impression, your license should be
Because we, because we had, because we had the, we had Brian, who was a former attorney. He did the, he, you know, he was working with Lakeville. We, we left off with Brian and we hired the new He did the, you know, he was working with Lakeville. We left off with Brian and we hired the new law firm, and they're the ones that filed our, I believe, with the state. So I think our state is in line with everything, but it's just the town of Lakeville is not.
No, you either have a license or you don't from the CCC. Do you have a license?
I do, I do have a license, and I believe it does cover product manufacturing. It's really standard, Amy. If you have a grow facility, you have a product manufacturer.
But you do get separate licenses from the CCC, so that's what I'm asking about.
I'm very sure I have, I have everything I need from the CCC, and I do have a license, and I have the number, the whole nine yards, and I paid the fee as well, the $50,000.
All right, so it sounds like we're heading down continuance anyways. And Amy, I want you to make sure we ask any other questions we need to. But if we're going to hand out to continuance, obviously you can produce that for the.
Oh, just to be sure.
For the next year, yeah. Well, I'm sure there's a way we can verify that. So, does anyone else? I'm sorry, who was asking?
I was just going to say, we're happy to provide supplemental materials and follow up with police and fire and, you know, provide documentation from the CCC commission.
That would be great. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions or anything else that we'd like to make sure that we have come back for the next potential meeting if we do continue it? Jerry?
Yeah, just a quick question, Chairman. If this is transitioning to the manufacturing side, is there any requirement for the board of health to do any inspection? Because this is now kind of in the food production manufacturing side.
I have no idea. I don't know if counsel would be able to, or Kathy would be able to comment on that. Kathy's nodding her head, so.
Yeah, they do have to go to the board of health. But they do have to.
We get an impact statement from them as well?
We can ask. Amy, I think you had. Police, fire, board of health and confirmation of the licensing. Amy, did you have another question?
Sure. So the only other thing that I was thinking about was that the security plan that was with the cultivation facility must have changed because now we have a product manufacturing also. So even though there's only a room, I'm assuming the security plan has changed. And we also have two additional employees. So do we have the updated security plan?
It's not additional employees.
It's not additional, it's not additional.
I thought it was too additional. I'm sorry, I'm confused.
I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke. I think what Dominic had referred to was they had already had two employees accounted for that function of the business. They just, you know, they didn't include that, they didn't include that on the permit, the prior law.
But still, there's another use.
Right, right.
Which is product manufacturing. So does the security plan reflect that use?
Let me ask a question, Amy. Would the, if the license was issued by the CCC, and I know they are involved in reviewing those security plans, if they fit for this use, for both uses? Because I know a lot, you know, and I'm sure we're no different than most communities. The police chiefs don't really share publicly, you know, one way or the other. They defer it to the CCC. So if we got the license from the CCC that shows that they're approving this use, does that confirm that the security plan that they've submitted does incorporate this use into it?
But one of the requirements of the filing is the security plan. So I was just wondering if we had an updated one.
Again, Amy, like I mentioned before, it was just my attorney and myself that missed it. Inside the facility, the room is there, the employees are there. This was happening. I just don't have the proper, we didn't apply for it properly. But everything was accounted for. And I could also have Mitch, who's going to be handling our security, perhaps in the next meeting, I'll have Mitch, you know, along on the meeting so that he can speak in regards if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't we do this? Two things. Mitch would be good to have at the next meeting and then also send us a copy. I know you've sent it before, and my guess is if it's the same security plan that took into account this room, it'll be a duplicate, but we can take that to confirm that it is being addressed. So it's either, you know, that way we'll have it on record that we did ask and we did confirm.
Sure.
But that suffice, Amy, those two things.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, it is, it's 7.4.6. And then it doesn't have another, it doesn't have a letter, but it comes after F. And then it's, it is actually E3, which has all, it's on page 47, if that helps, of the zoning bylaw. But anyway, that shows everything that's supposed to be filed, just to make sure, so it's in the file.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other requests for information?
Make a motion to continue?
Okay, so Chris Carmichael made a motion to continue. I guess our May meeting. Do we have, we have a lot on the May meeting? Kathy?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, and who's second? Was that Jerry? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, vote to continue the hearing till, what's the date, Kathy? May?
May 20th.
May 20th. Nora?
Yes.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yay.
Jerry?
Yeah.
And I am in favor as well. So the motion passes unanimously, meeting is continued. And I guess that's it. Do you have any questions, Meg, or clarifications that you need from us or before you?
I just want to confirm that I, you know, will be responding to everything that the board wants to see at the next hearing. So from my understanding is that you'd like impact statements from the police, fire, board of health, and we'll provide state licensing documentation. I did just confirm that Twisted Growers is provisionally licensed for cultivation and product manufacturing, but we can provide documentation to the board reflecting that. And that the board would also like to see a security plan, ensuring that product manufacturing is included in the security plan. And we'll reach out to Mitch to see if he's available to come and, you know, provide, answer any other further questions with respect to security. Is that, do I have everything?
I think you got it all. Did you miss anything, Amy?
I don't have, am I still on mute? No, I'm not. I do not have anything else.
Great.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Appreciate it.
Yes. Do we have them agree to the continuance?
Amy? I'm not really sure where we're at. Kathy, oh no, this is a special permit. So, so we're good. We have, in fact, when we close it, we have 90 days to issue a decision, but we won't, so don't worry about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, folks. Let's see. Kathy, do we have minutes?
Yes.
We do. Let me keep scrolling here.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of November 19th, 2020 and February 23rd, 2021. I did check that all the members were at both of these meetings.
Well, since Nora did her homework, if everyone was at the meetings, Amy, can we approve them both at the same time?
I was not the 19th.
What was that, Chris?
No, Jeff, Jeff, that's right. He wasn't because he couldn't get on, right? Something like that?
Correct.
Oh, you're right. My apology. I missed that.
All right, so revise that.
We'll do these separately. We have to do these separately. So I move that we approve the minutes of November 19th by those members who were present, which was John, myself, Jerry, Chris Carmichael, Chris Campino, and Shady.
We have a second?
I will second, Noble.
Okay, Jerry. Nora made the motion. Jerry seconded for approval of the November meeting's minutes. Roll call, vote. Nora?
Aye.
Chris Campo?
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Jeff?
Ken, 19th.
You, you know, we're doing Novembers right now. You were.
Yeah, that's the one I wasn't.
That's the one, wasn't it?
Oh, that wasn't, I'm sorry. Okay. I had them backwards. All right, so Jerry?
Yeah.
Chris Sheedy? And I'm in favor as well. Motion passes unanimously, one abstention. And the next one, Nora?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 23rd meeting. It looks like we. Excuse me?
I was there on the, both of them, 23rd.
Yeah, it looks like we have everyone.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor. Nora?
Aye.
Chris Campo?
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Barry?
Yeah.
Chris Sheedy? And I'm in favor as well. Motion carries. And I believe that's it. We don't have any other minutes, correct?
Well, that was it.
That was it. Okay, any other business to come before the board?
No, Mr. Chairman, I will draft up findings on Twisted Growers for the next meeting. Is that?
That would be wonderful.
I'm supposed to do? Okay, great. I can do that.
Excellent. Yeah, my guess is we should probably be able to get through that if they bring.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
Okay. All right, if we have no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait a minute, Kathy's got some business. What did I miss?
Just under old business, I don't know if anyone had had a chance to look at that signed by law, if they had any comments that they wanted to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah. Does anyone have any comments? When are they meeting to talk about that, the planning board?
It's not on any recent agenda, but just, it will probably be coming up, so, I mean, it's good. I can throw it back on.
Yeah, why don't we throw it back on? And I will admittedly confess that I didn't really spend a lot of time reviewing the documents you sent or giving this any significant focus. So if we could take a few minutes and maybe come back with some comments. I mean, this is, this actually impacts us probably more than any other, any other committee in town only because we get a lot of stuff that comes before us from a science standpoint that really shouldn't necessarily have to make it this way. So I think it serves us well to be involved in the process to try to correct that. So, so maybe we can come back with some comments and, yeah, put it on old business for the next meeting. Kathy? All right, we don't have any new business, so I guess now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Seconded.
Jerry seconded. All in favor will go out in a roll call vote here. Nora?
Yes.
Chris Campo?
Yep.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jerry Noble?
Yeah.
Chris Sheedy?
Yes.
And I am in favor as well. So that's it. Motion carries, meeting adjourned at 8:05 PM. Thank you, everyone.